Okay. Okay, welcome to the Library Board of Trustees meeting on Wednesday, March fifth, two thousand twenty twenty five at five thirty P M. Can we have a roll call, please?
Sure, Juanita Garner here.
David Norgard.
President.
Al Jones.
Here.
And Deb Schwartz is excused and not here. So, um, five thirty three here. Um, okay.
Okay, um, do I have a motion to accept the agenda?
So move second.
Great, thank you.
I think this can be the pattern tonight, so we'll see.
And so since we have to uh do this, uh, because Al is uh attending remotely, we have to do roll call votes for every.
For everything.
Okay, so.
All right.
Okay, uh, Juanita Gardner.
Yes.
David Norgard.
Yes.
Al Jones.
Yes.
Three to zero.
And no one has joined me at the public meeting, just so that you know. Actually, it's quite possible. There's a lot of people in Palm Springs down here, so.
That would be really funny.
Yes.
And moving on, um, this time has been set aside for members of the public to address the Library Board of Trustees on agenda items. The items of general interest within the subject matter within jurisdiction of the city. Although the Library Board of Trustees values your comments pursuant to the Brown Act, it is generally not, it generally cannot take action on items not listed in the posted agenda. Three minutes will be assigned to each speaker. Do we have any public comment?
Um, we have any online, please raise your hand, use the raise hand feature, but I think they're just observers.
Yep, great, okay. Thank you. And so we will move on to the acceptance of the consent agenda. Do I need to have a motion?
Yes.
So moved.
Great, can we have a roll call, please?
Oh, you can't see me?
I'm there. You know, I said, I was looking in the wrong place.
It's small. Yeah, uh, Al, uh, let's see, Juanita Garner.
Yes.
David Norgard.
Yes.
Al Jones.
Yes.
Three to zero.
Great, perfect. Okay, so, um. What are we gonna start here?
Administrator.
It's got an administrative reports and do we have a report from Friends of the Palm Springs Library?
Well, I will report, um, Julie Julie's, um, not with, not here today, not with, she's not here today. But, um, and also the Friends aren't here, but the Friends of the Palm Springs Library had a wonderful book sale this past weekend. Um, or was it this past week?
Yeah.
I've lost my mind. Yeah, they've been doing, um, bag sales, uh, at the Frye Building, a bag and box sales. And, um, so that trying to clear out some of the old inventory and they did really well. They had also a really great, uh, time at the Modernism Week, um, house tour and lectures that they offered. They, um, they. They did very well, very well. So we're very happy about that. And, uh, they have a fundraise coming up for, um, the library, which is, um, Palm Springs Speaks. And, um, we have an author set for April third, it's Thursday, April third at seven P M. And it will be Mary Louise Kelly from NPR's All Things Considered.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, and she's got a really great book, which I have been reading and enjoying. And so, uh, this will conclude our season, we are pretty sure. This will conclude the season unless we get somebody showing up at the last minute, but, um. Yeah, we're really excited about this. In in this instance, we're doing, um, uh, two tiers of tickets. We're doing a ticket with a book and then a ticket without a book. And then, um, she will do a book signing afterwards for everybody. So a a little bit of a different model of event, but, um, we cannot wait. It's gonna be at the Palm Springs Cultural Center. And, um, so get your tickets at palm springs speaks dot org and it proceeds benefit the library. And I think.
Did you say what time did I just?
It starts at seven.
P M. Oh, okay.
Yeah. Very cool. Seven P M. On a Thursday night.
So I know, uh, Palm Springs Public Library Foundation, Foundation is going to be speaking later on. Do we want to have a report now or do we want to wait?
Well, um.
We can do both.
Both, okay. And we've got Lolly online too, so I don't know if, um.
Peter's here to start.
Peter's online, but, um, let me ask, ask, sorry, let's ask Lolly real quick, uh, allow allow her to talk. Um. Uh, Lolly, were you going to speak too? Or are you just observing?
I'm just observing. Thank you for for making this available.
Okay, thank you.
So so both Bill Wiley, our board president, and I, we're gonna give reports for our administrative report if we could.
Great. Okay.
So I I'll start out, Peter Pearson, Executive Director of the Library Foundation. Uh, just a couple of things to report on. First is that, uh, we are trying very much to develop new individual donors to the foundation. And, uh, to help facilitate that, we've decided to do two individual solicitations each year. We did one in the fall, in November, December, for the typical year end campaign, which was very successful. We almost doubled what we made the year before. And then we're also doing one in the next month called Library Giving Day. And Library Giving Day is a time when we s- ask individuals to make a donation because they love their library. And it's a national, uh, Library Foundation event that was started about six years ago. This now become, uh, something that many, many library foundations are doing. We are again working with Carl Blumen Associates, who has developed a message and done a mailing for us. We are mailing to four thousand households in the valley who've never given to the foundation. And those letters actually have just gone out. Uh, then in addition, we are, uh, printing two hundred letters to our current donors. Those are gonna be mailed to us. And our board members who are meeting next week for a board meeting are gonna have an opportunity to sign those personally and add personal notes to them. And so those are gonna go out late next week. So we're hoping that this will become a tradition, that we'll do two of these mailings each year to increase the number of individual donors we can attract to the foundation. In addition, I think all of you know of our special event coming up on April eleventh. Cocktails on the Page. We sent, uh, to all of you a link to purchase tickets early. Hope you had an opportunity to do that, and if you don't, uh, it's not too late. We do expect that that's gonna be a sellout. We have author, uh, Ruffey Thorpe, who's gonna be at the home, uh, which used to be Liberace's home, which is now the home of one of our board members, Betsy Smalley. It's gonna be a beautiful evening with cocktails hors d'oeuvres. Uh, you'll get a copy of the book and Ruffey Thorpe will do a presentation, uh, at some point during the evening. She is a very engaging and entertaining author, and I think you'll really enjoy this. Uh, her book is already being optioned into a series on Apple T V, so uh, obviously the the book is gonna get a lot of attention here in the near future. Hope you can join us there. Um, we're also gonna be at the One P S Picnic on March twenty second. And appreciate the library, uh, giving us the the table that we can be there with, we'll be with the friends. So hopefully have a good presence there. Also wanted to let you know that we've just recently created a new brochure about the Friends that we're calling a Rack Card. It's a basic, it's a little bit larger than a bookmark and it's printed on both sides with basic information about the Library Foundation. Uh, we're gonna be able to distribute that at One P S Picnic, also at our programs and special events. And they're at the library. And I want you to know that as a result of this, it was just developed in the last month by one of our board members, Jack Fitzsimmons. An individual picked one up at the library and made a a thousand dollar donation based on that rack card, which is so exciting. Last thing I will say is the nominating committee for the Library Foundation is hard at work, chaired by Robin Melzer. Uh, Robin has identified three new individuals who are gonna be brought before our board to, uh, be elected for the next, uh, fiscal year, starting July first. That will bring the Foundation's board to twenty five members. In addition, we'll be, um, electing officers for the new year. And we should expect that the officers for next year would be the same as this year, but again, the the election hasn't happened yet, so anything can happen. But we anticipate that, uh, the current officers will be elected for a second year. And I'll turn it over to, uh, Bill Wiley, our board president now.
Thanks, Peter. Thank you.
Do you wanna come up?
Yeah, I'll come up.
Yeah, I'm kinda. Go ahead.
Thank you. So thanks, and I. I think you can, I think you can tell that from what Peter was saying, we've been busy and industrious in the last several months is is normal. And the only thing I really wanted to add to this is, um, to continue to thank you for the support, the financial support that you've given us. Um, I think you see when Peter talks about all these things, we couldn't do it without him. So the grant that you provided us with to support his, um, compensation has been put to really good use and um, w- we love working with Peter and we make progress with Peter and you facilitated that and enabled that. And I think we have, uh, also, um, a lot of interest in continuing our awareness campaign. And, uh, we did, uh, some, uh, modest but interesting, uh, work in in January, um, extending, uh, pretty much the program we kicked off la- a year ago in, uh, March, um, at the, um, Academy Awards last last year. And I think we're going into the budget seasons, you're going into your budget, we're going into ours. And so I just wanted to plant a couple of seeds with you. We're mindful of the fact that you have still, um, reserved a hundred twenty seven thousand dollars of the original half a million that you put aside for us. And we only come to you when we know something specific that we wanna ask you to use the money for. Um, and so I don't have this a specific target right today, but I'm just saying we probably will by the end of this fiscal year. And, um, those would be in two, two areas, that the awareness area for sure. Um, we're doing some interesting things with mailing lists and and those kinds of things as Peter was mentioning, and then also, um, we wanna move the uh, the board, um, in our, um, activities, our fundraising activities for our administrative purposes. Um, we wanna move them up scale. And to be able to do that, we may need some assistance, uh, for speaker, for a venue, for um, a security, for, you know, whatever, um, and so we're working on both of those areas. And we'll be fleshing those out over the next thirty to forty five days. And so we'll probably be coming back to you with a request. Um, and so with that, uh, again, thanks for the previous support. Um, it's been very meaningful for us and, um, helpful and, uh, we're we're moving forward. Thank you.
You can, you can just turn off the mic and stay there till the next, till your item comes up again, you want.
Well, I I think you guys do an amazing job. The foundation is just, it's unbelievable how quickly everything is moving. And I mean, it sounds fantastic. I am, you know, I, of course, from the very beginning, I was all in, but even more now, I'm really excited. Do you have anything to add?
Um, and you have one question, I think, for Peter. Um, I'm just curious about the four thousand, uh, piece mainly and what segmentation, uh, you have for that. Uh, is it by zip code and income level? Uh, can you say just a word about the target audience?
I sure sure will. So we don't select the four thousand households. Those are selected by Carl Blumen Associates, who are experts in doing direct mail campaigns. And they gather demographic information about individuals, including income levels. Um, if they are donors to things like public radio and public television, uh, education levels. All of those things are factored in to for them to determine who's the most ideal candidate that they can mail these to, who'd be open to making a donation to a public library foundation. So, and we don't see that list. We're not allowed, we're, what what they say is that the the list is rented, which means they send this all out from their offices. We don't see any of those names until someone donates. So for instance, from the, from this list that they did in, uh, November, December, we, uh, obtained sixty five new donors. And then once we have those new donors, they're ours forever. And so it's up to us to nurture those donors and to continue to solicit them for future ongoing gifts.
Um, w- w- was the sixty five out of a, out of a four thousand mailing also?
Yes, and and which is very typical. Usually out of mailings, you get about a one to one and a half percent return.
Yeah, I I'm I'm, um, aware of that, and so that sounds actually on the upside. The. It'd be the upper level of what one could expect.
Right, and what was interesting was the amount that was actually donated. Many times when you do what's called an acquisition campaign like these, you're expected in the first round to just break even, to not make a profit. Usually the cost of doing it is equal to what comes in. And then from there on, it's all profit. Uh, in this case, we actually made a profit on this first list of individuals coming in. So we're, we were very pleased, and so was Carl Bloom. They they thought that we had an outstanding response, which I agree with. So we're looking forward to seeing again what happens with Library Giving Day.
Right, yeah, good, tha- thank you.
Palm Springs, Palm Springs is such a generous community. It surprised us, but on the other hand, it kind of didn't, you know, cuz people here are really, really great.
Well, that's wonderful. Everything is moving along really well, so that's, that makes us very happy, of course. Okay, we're going to move on to library staff. Do you have a report for us?
Well, thank you. Um, I do wanna add on, um, to what Peter said about cocktails on the page, um, that you can find tickets on Eventbrite. So if you go to Eventbrite and search for cocktails on the page or events in Palm Springs and by the date, you will find this event and the ticket, um, purchasing ability. Um, same thing with Palm Springs Speaks, you search for Palm Springs Speaks or Mary Louise Kelly, you will find the ticketing, um, portal for those. Um, I want to remind you that Serving With A Purpose is coming up, uh, Thursday, May fifteenth. Uh, early bird pricing is now through mid-March, just a reminder about that. I know David said he's purchased his tickets. So, um, uh, card pooling opportunity is a bad one. Um. Let's see, and another thing that was mentioned was the One P S Picnic. And, uh, this is a reminder for everyone in Palm Springs that this is a free picnic for residents of Palm Springs. And you get, uh, you check in at the check-in table and they give you a ticket good for lunch. So it's a free lunch, um, for all the Palm Springs residents. You just go tell them what, um, neighborhood you live in. If if you don't know your neighborhood, your assigned neighborhood, they will help you find that. And it's a great way to connect. There's so many different booths, um, games for the kids, uh, entertainment, a doggy costume contest usually, um, it's so fun. So it runs eleven A M. to two P M. And, uh, weather permitting, they will have, uh, hot air balloon rides, the tethered balloon rides. I did that one time with Denise Schoolzbi and I got in the balloon and it was a lot of fun cuz I'd never done that before. Uh, just heads up about that. That's a really fun event. Um.
Didn't see, is that March twenty second?
March, Saturday, March twenty second.
Thanks.
Yes, um, the, oh, I should mention too, the Friends of the Libraries Annual Meeting is Sunday, March sixteenth. It's a busy month. We have a lot going on, so, uh, and you can, uh, access, uh, if you're a Friends member, it's Friends members only, but to become a Friends member, it's only twenty dollars. And that is friends of the Palm Springs Library dot org. All these directional locations. If you can't find it, contact us at the library, we can help you. Um. We are for the library programs, which Julie usually gives us, uh, we are highlighting some, some of these to let you know about them. So it is Women's History Month and, uh, on March twelfth, Deserted Films will have a Women in Films program at the library, six P M. on on March twelfth. March eighteenth, we are having a political cartoonist in partnership with the Coachella Valley Journalism Foundation. Uh, our flyer is for for you all here, the crowds here. We have flyers in the back of the room, if you would like one. Um, we are doing a poetry club at the Wellwood Library, Wellwood Murray Memorial Library. It's the last Wednesday of every month at four P M. And we had our first meeting and I had a really good turnout on that one. And I'll talk about the other renovation stuff. So things are going great at the library. We're doing a lot of fun things tonight. We're, um, no one, we're having, there's an art exhibit at the library of schoolchildren. Schoolchildren Art Exhibit right now at the library. Run over there and go look at it immediately. It's really cute.
Very well, we're moving on to the treasurer's report.
The treasurer's report, yes. Um, not much activity. Hang on, let me get to the right page here. All right, um, and in comparison to the last month, which was, um, the balance sheet for, what's the date there?
It's the eighth month.
The, yeah, the fifth, I mean, for for February. So this one is on page eleven. That's the part I always kind of go with. Uh, there's not that much change. Um, what is new is the, um, I mean, comparing the two again, I just did that. I made my notes on it, as a matter of fact. Okay, here we go. Um, we, the end balance was one point five four one, I'm sorry, was one point. Get to the right page, was one point five four one oh six one was the ending balance. Um, the only new change to this was there was a minus forty one thousand six hundred and thirty dollars, which was a revenue control item, which you may need to explain, Jeannie. Um, the balance in the previous month was one point five five zero. And we went from one five fifty up to one point five seven eight, um, on the operating bank account. But in terms of the total, we went from one point five four one to one point five eight two. So really not, again, much change. The difference in that was forty one thousand six hundred and thirty one dollars, which represents that forty one thousand six hundred and thirty dollars revenue control. That is the explanation for the change, yeah.
And I believe the the forty forty three thousand or the forty some thousand, that's, um, it's like the fiscal year adjustments, just to close out the previous year and take care of it. Probably take care of the the ending bath for the previous year. And it's when we start our fiscal year, we have to guess what we're gonna end on, and then they do a budget adjustment for that to make, to square it up.
Right.
One good news item is that if you see on page fourteen of your packet that, um, quarter one and quarter two interest income has been added to your account totaling twenty five thousand seven hundred dollars.
That's great.
You earned interest. There we go. It's very exciting.
But that ends my treasurer's report.
Okay, very good. We don't need to do anything with this, right?
Really don't have to. You you technically, you don't have to accept, or you don't have to do a vote or anything to accept a report. It's just a report, even though we haven't listed as a motion.
Right.
Second.
Right.
Didn't know because Al was out.
Yeah, historically, we've always, um, made an formal motion, I think, but.
If you want to, you can.
Doesn't make any difference.
Right, do I have a motion to accept the budget?
Move to accept.
Sorry, the treasurer's report.
I will second.
Excellent. Okay, wow, we get to my.
I need to take a roll call.
Oh, roll call, please.
Juanita, yes. David.
Uh, for, yes.
Al.
Yes.
Okay, good.
All passed. Okay, moving on to my favorite part, um, Library Foundation Midyear Report.
So I think that, um, Bill, are you giving the report?
Yes.
Okay, do you need a copy?
Uh, no, I don't. Uh, we, well, that was in the packet, right?
Yes.
Okay, so I don't wanna labor it for everybody, but, um, I will just point out a few things that I think are significant, uh, and then obviously, if you have questions and wanna go over something specific, then I may ask you for that copy. But, um, I think the big things are that, uh, we're talking about, um, July and December of last year, six months. And I think the big things are that we formed, um, steering committee for our capital campaign. And after forming that, we formed an honorary committee uh, of some important individuals, um, in in our community that are gonna help us, uh, open some doors and facilitate discussions with individuals. When we, when we move the nervous to, uh, solicit donations. So, um, that, as you can imagine, that's a big deal for us. I mean, that's, that's our mission, um. That's our reason for being, uh, and so that was, that was very important. And we've got two great folks, um, Ed McBride, who you know, and Jeffrey Norman, who you probably know too. Um, they're co-chairs. And in December, um, we added, uh, to that group by hiring a consultant that can further, um, uh, the best way to say it probably is set a, set a strategy and then a series of tactics that we can implement. Uh, because this person knows, uh, the philanthropic community here in Palm Springs really, really well. So we thought that would be, um, money well spent, um, and we already made a lot of progress, uh, with that. So that's probably the biggest, uh, the first biggest thing. The second thing is, uh, as Peter mentioned, we, we decided to utilize um, a different approach on our, um, fundraising for our administrative purposes for our annual giving. And it was a little bit of a risk, but we decided that we would take that risk and and it paid off really well. And so we're, you know, we're, we're open to new techniques and and it's one of the things that Peter brings to us, um, from his vast experience. And so we're open to those kinds of, um, innovations, uh, or doing things that we hadn't done in the past. And we increased our net takeaway by fifty percent, um, by doing that. So, um, it's paid off and again, we're gonna utilize, uh, that in the spring with the, uh, library giving, uh, program that we have. Um, there's another technique that we used in addition to the acquisition, and that was, um, signing the, um, solicitation letters to our current donor donors by a board member. And that's again, something that Peter suggested that he do. That made a big difference as well. So, um, again, creativity, innovation, um, we're in, we're incorporating those into the things that we're doing. We're always looking for a new and better way of of approaching things. And so that's another point I wanted to bring up. And then I guess the third thing would be, um, spend my experience in in, uh, the not-for-profits and and my work, uh, experience, um, my career, so to speak. But, uh, the, uh, that, uh, the, the organizations that make the most progress do it in between their meetings. And they also do it in summer when people are thinking about vacations and so on. And our, our organization was very active this summer. And, you know, we, we did, uh, bylaws and we, which is the institutional, uh, equivalent of a root canal, um, and, uh, you know, and nobody wants to do it, but we did it, okay? And so, and and we kept recruiting and we kept, uh, uh, doing all the things and and all those things get put into place. And then you sit here six months later and unable to write a a very glowing mid-year report because everybody's working their butts off, uh, in July and August, um, and and, um, in between the meetings. So that, that's, um, that's another testament to the quality of people that we have on our, uh, board is pretty amazing. And we love having Al and Deb come to our meetings and participate in our meetings and observe, uh, the committee reports and everything and um, all the progress that we're making and and so on. Um, and we, we have a lot of things in the hopper now. Uh, as I mentioned, there's a couple of, uh, ideas we have for awareness and 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 additional fundraising. Lolly's here because, um, we wanna support Jeannie, um, with advocacy, uh, during the important, um, city, uh, public meetings on, uh, financing the the renovation um, and securing the budget for the. and securing the budget for the for the renovation and so on. So we've laid in a lot of a lot of activities and and I couldn't I couldn't say more of the quality of this board. And we're adding new people and it's just, it's it's great. It's just fun to be around. And it's a lot of hard work, but we're doing it, I think, pretty well. That that those are the big three that I thought I would I that I would mention. There's a lot of other things that I that I put in there, I guess. We have a roster of the of the current board members there. And we have some other items or anything. Jeannie was there.
Pride on the page.
Oh, yeah, I should mention Pride on the Page. And a lot of work goes into Pride on the Page. I think we're going to take a little bit different tack next next year. We want to continue that. It's not it's not a major fundraiser for us. And we've done it three years in a row. It does redound to us from a reputational standpoint. We do want to continue to do it because it's part of our commitment to the community as a not-for-profit here. And so, but we're going to scale it back so we can match revenue to expense and still provide a quality product for the community. This year, we had thirty percent more people attended. But we don't charge for that. And so the economic model for that is not is not necessarily one that is geared towards raising funds. It's more for us to, again, participate and keep our name prominent with certain people in in the community and allows us to advertise about about that sponsored by the foundation and so on. So we we did get fantastic help as usual from Julie Warren, and we should mention that too.
Great, thank you very much. Do you have any questions, David or Al? Any questions?
No, no questions.
No questions, just a word of commendation for the really excellent work that seems to have happened in this first six months, or I mean, the prior six months. My hat's off to you and Peter and all the rest.
Thank you, thank you.
And I second that.
Thank you.
Fantastic.
And I have made public comment about that many times. It's a great group. It's a great group. Fantastic.
Thank you. And Al, you're always invited back.
Well, hey, I think I've only missed, I think I've only missed one of those meetings as your liaison the last two years, so.
I know. You're you're like the Mr. Consistency and we love it.
Okay, so I've got review list of proposed Library Foundation naming rights opportunities. Is this something we're going to be able to discuss tonight?
Yes, but you should actually on the do a motion.
Do a motion. Okay, can I have a motion to accept the Library Foundation midyear report?
So moved.
So.
Great, roll call.
Okay. Juanita Garner?
Yes.
David Norgard?
Yes.
Al Jones?
Yes.
Motion passes. Read it, sir. Okay, now, seventy.
Okay, now seventy, review list of proposed Library Foundation naming rights opportunities.
So let me find my memo. In your packet, you will find a stack of like a memorandum on page twenty-two. And this is explaining what we're doing. So the Library Foundation already has a memorandum of understanding between the City of Palm Springs and the Palm Springs Public Library Foundation to fundraise for the library in this, in a, in the building capacity, capital campaign capacity. They do have the authority to do naming rights and there are a, there is a progression of steps of 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 authority levels, if you will. And if the naming right is over one hundred thousand dollars, it needs to go to city council for approval. Now, what the foundation is asking is that we clear the list to make sure that we don't, they don't go out and fundraise for something that then will get declined. A piece of a room or a piece of property or furniture or whatnot. So we want to bring this to you, the the Levered Board of Trustees, to give your recommendation to the council. So because the council has the final authority over the list. And but we want to wrap it up into a staff report that that says that you all have seen this. You all, if you do give approval, recommendation that we want to include that text in there so that they know that you are aware of it before they see it. So I don't know exactly the date on when we're going to take this to them, maybe in April. Honestly, but but what the list, there is, there are more items on here, but on their naming rights list. But it's all, it's a lot of things that are less than a hundred thousand dollars at this point on on their price point. The the list here lists things like the entire campus, the library building, the south entrance, north entrance. Energy Improvis, the Frye Building, like I'm just reading them real quickly, main reception, children's area, the toy pond, the digital sign outside on the street corner, desert scaping, the patio for the meeting rooms, the family patio. Did I say community? Yes, community room. So we have some really great opportunities for donors to have their names or their loved ones' names put onto these spaces, which in turn raises money to help pay for these spaces. So this is a sponsorship. And I did include the memorandum of understanding in the packet so that you could see what, and you all were a part of this in the past. So you know about this, but I wanted to keep these two documents together. And then Bill or Peter, do you have anything you would like to add?
Can I, can I ask a quick question though before, before? What what is the length of term if somebody gets this? How long does their name stay?
Good question.
I was trying to find it. I know it's in the report.
On page twenty-eight of the, which is part of the memorandum of understandings.
Okay, there it is. I knew I had seen it. Right, okay.
It's a twenty-year term.
Right, okay, okay.
It's not forever. Twenty years may seem like a lifetime, but but things will, you know, it will evolve and then it'll be time to to renovate again or sell that space again. And so we want to make sure that everybody, that everything that we do is completely clear to everyone involved. The donors know what they're getting into and their expectations are.
Thank you. I just couldn't find it that quickly.
Yeah, very good question.
That's a great, great question. The the thing I was going to say was this is so great, you know, I mean, we have, we're at the point where we're starting to talk about marketing, naming opportunities for the library. And so we're on the verge of getting significant donor participation in the fundraiser. And getting to to that point has been a lot of hard work. And her her team. And we've been sort of waiting in the wings and now that's meshing. So it's it's very exciting.
Well, we've looked at this before. I'm sorry, I was just gonna.
Go ahead.
I was just going to go ahead and make a motion to approve this, or I don't know what the actual correct term would be, verb. But I guess we've reviewed the list, but we support the list. I don't know. What what is the appropriate language, Jeannie?
Really good question. I think that you could make a motion to support and support the list, the list of naming rights opportunities and recommend that the city council approve.
That's it. That recommend the city council.
Endorse.
Okay, there you go. Thank you.
Okay, that would be my motion as amended.
So what was?
Let's clarify the motion again. Al, can you?
Yeah, it's it's to endorse the list and to recommend to the city council to let them know that we approved the list. We've had a chance to review it on the memorandum of understanding and that we urge the city council to adopt the list, I guess.
I'm sorry, I'm going to say endorse the list, which the naming rights list and recommend to city council to adopt.
Correct. Thank you for cleaning that language up.
Simplifier.
Well stated. Second.
Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Juanita Garner?
Yes.
David Norgard?
Yes.
Al Jones?
Yes. I'm tempted just to say no to stir things up, but.
It has to be unanimous on a three-hundred-person meeting.
Be a troublemaker. Okay, moving on to item seven C, discussion library renovation updates and temporary library location status.
Okay, well, this one doesn't require any motions or anything. This is just a an update. The update is quite the same as last month, I will tell you. We're we're kind of like Bill was saying, we're waiting in the wings. We're ready. We're we're in the hurry up and wait stage. And then as soon as everything happens, we're going to have to hurry up and make it all happen. So we're like we are, our city council has engaged, as as a city, they have engaged a real estate brokerage firm to handle all of the city's real estate needs. And so we have been working with this firm to to search for temporary location. And we do not have a temporary location yet. But we are working on it. And so we're making good progress. And
Yeah, I asked the name of the firm.
It's CBRE. Probably Commercial Broker Real Estate.
I've seen that. I've seen that.
Very, I think nationwide, I feel like it's a very well-known name. But they are doing all of the city's real estate needs. So CBRE and they're based in San Diego.
Okay.
I've been working with with them and the broker that I'm, there are two brokers that I'm working with. And they are familiar with the area and also familiar with government, government leases and real estate, real estate transactions. So we have good experts helping us and we are working on that. We've we've done a job walk. We have an open invitation for movers, library movers. It's it's open right now. So movers can provide quotations for us. And we did a job walk this week and so we're in the hurry up and wait stage right now. Yeah, that's where we are. We'll probably honestly, I I don't want to guarantee this, but I will say that we will probably go to council next month. I don't know. I'm probably the last meeting in April, but I don't want to guarantee it. I don't really want to put that out on in the media. I don't, I don't want to promise because I don't, I it's, I don't know for sure. But that's what we're aiming for. So that's that's where we're at right now.
Okay, and that I just, and that we're still on target as far as everything else in the the renovation.
We're still within our timeline. We're a little bit, a little bit delayed, but not enough to jeopardize our grant. We're we're still on, we're still on target.
Great.
Yes.
Any questions?
No.
Okay, well, great. Thank you so very much. Wow, I felt like a lot happened this meeting.
I felt like a lot happened this week.
Yes, it's very exciting. Okay. Thank you very much. I think with that, we're going to adjourn the.
You have committee reports?
Committee reports. Do we have committee reports?
No, no committee reports, other than if I may, as the liaison to the foundation, there was a reception that was very well held. I was the only trustee there. But the intent was to have an informal gathering so that the foundation members, of which now there are going to be twenty-five, had a chance to talk informally and get to know one another. And we so frequently, and and Bill, you said it so well too at the the event. But I just wanted to compliment the foundation in another milestone of bringing people together, not to talk about business, but to socialize and to get to know one another. And that really helps as you move forward. So anyway, thank you, Bill.
Well, thank you, Al, for recognizing that. And I'll say that this is part of what happens in our foundation board. These ideas come from the board, it's not just top down. Gary Grace is our new treasurer and Gary opened his home with his wife. And it was a lovely couple hours that we all spent together. And so it was Gary's idea and, you know, they they pulled it off marvelously.
They did. They did indeed.
It was beautiful. It's really fun.
I have just a very quick note. In my new role as liaison to the Friends, I'll be at its, I'll be attending my first of their board meetings this month and as well as the annual meeting.
Very good. Okay, so any, any more staff comments or future agenda items? Or anybody? No, no? Okay, very good. So now we will adjourn the meeting of the Library Board of Trustees. It is, what time?
Six sixteen.
Six sixteen. Thank you, everyone.
Great, thank you. A well-run meeting. Are we adjourned?